Twenty third, twenty twenty five, five thirty one E M.
Councilor Russo.
Yeah.
Councilor Moran.
Here.
Councilor Rubio. Elizabeth Marrera.
Here.
Jason Peddano.
Here.
Chris Crawley.
Here.
Aubrey Veskey.
Here.
David Milliardi.
Here.
And Kevin Barr.
Here.
We have all nine of the tenants.
Okay, so any public input? Yeah. A person on my line.
I had no sign ups and nobody on my line.
Item number three for view three, sorry. Item number three.
No, item two.
Item number two, committee minute minutes. Uh, from August thirteen, twenty twenty five.
It's a move by council, we will second by council, we're in that we um, rule the minutes of the committee minutes from eight thirteen, twenty twenty five and. And discussion. All beta.
Hi.
Hello, what's your guys? Um, councilor, anyone pick number three?
Sure. Number three, review and consideration of bids for project number twenty six C C dash zero zero one. Of pre-construction services, conceptual estimating study, revitalization of city hall, rebids. I guess motion to take up and discuss.
As the rule by council, we're in second by council, we do that, uh, we gave up, uh, we do in consideration of this project, from six, that those are one pre-construction services, conceptual estimating study, revitalization of city hall, um, student. Okay, so um. Just follow, just you guys right there, you, uh, I'm actually explaining, um, companies that submitted. You might take one by one or?
Yeah, I I can start off, um. I know we mentioned, um, at the. Um. Nothing, but all this, uh, one of the previous, uh, meetings that when we go out that some of these, uh, vendors might not submit a bid based on. Their schedule and availability. Uh, so we did, as we can see in the memo from October fourteen, uh. Five of them, uh, offered not to submit a bid. Um. And five A design was on N P A, they reached out. Uh, due to doing firework at the facility, so we we we, um, offered them to submit a bid. And then, um, arena construction was referred to from one of the other vendors that I thought, um. They're actually referred by O T V. Um, so we we look, yeah, but we 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 were able to get three estimates. Um. They're all, as mentioned before, they're all qualified, so it's basically what you're, what you're looking for, for the services. Um. I don't know, you wanna add anything here?
Um, yeah, no, I just wanna say, um, that. Um, yeah, you got, based on the way that we we, um, we put this out to them, give them all a very long, lively list of. Of things, of things that we expect of all of them. Um, by spending a bid, we do everything with, everything on the list. So, you know, the very price. You know, you can see, for instance, the fact that already can be, um, declined or referred only direction to us. I'm sure there's a process of this where, uh, a larger company will will. Will will, uh, take a bid like this and farm it out to a smaller company. They'll get invoice to them, kind of mark up a little bit, and then grateful, I'd say, because it's in favor of this case. By referring us to one of their subcontractors. Do the work directly with us. Um, it was, so that's why we were listening to them this long. So I was, so Chris, I am not fully surprised based on, compared to the small scope of work. Um, you know, normally we're done, we said the biggest is twenty six days. So, um, that, you know, based on our schedule, some we we have some, some to be part of.
So this was really a level, we're just trying to double check what, you know, do the same thing that Downs did to give us a new, um, an estimate based on what they see when some of. Um, the worst with Downs and they did, I agree.
We've basically copied the list from the view down to to check out the zip code for the building. Um, so as I said, there was.
Question about that, I'm sorry, if you're trying to people never. We never have seen the the specs that were given to Downs and we don't have them here either, so I guess. My, uh. I can see numbers on a page, but I I don't know specifically what they're being asked to do for this amount of money. I mean, I understand generally, but.
If I can jump in, it should be in your package, this, this is what they're, this is the work that's with Downs. If you look back in previous when Downs presented, um, this, this is all the square footage and the different, uh, materials that they're processed meeting on. So this is what they're, you're gonna, you already received the one that Downs presented to to us, right? And then whoever we decide, if we decide on someone, they're gonna do the same thing based on the square footage and.
Right.
Crazy, that that should be in your bag if you don't have it.
Yeah, no, no, I I think what I'm I'm not realizing is, these are, these are the. These are the, this is the budget that they've sent back to us, right? But is this, were there a set of specs, like, what did we, was there a document that was sent to them? That told them what we want them to do?
Yeah, this, this is that, yeah, yeah, that is she, this is what they're, this is what, yeah.
This is the next thing. This is building, this is all we sent them.
This, yeah, if we were, who the heart of them, they would sell it all these blanks, right, Chris?
Right.
It was all these blanks for us, and it would total up to. What we saw, hundred billion, I mean. Be the way, maybe hopefully lower.
Yeah, you you gotta keep in mind that we don't have any, um. Designs at at this moment right now, as we move forward and if we're gonna continue with the project. Then we would bring in somebody and then they would produce, uh, the documents and then we could get. For another cost estimate, so thi- this is, as we said before, this is only to give you a ballpark of what it would cost. Based on the square footage of the, of the facility, so you you're not gonna get two numbers until you actually. Design what you're looking to improve, right? And and then.
That's what I mean, so none of that's ever been done, and it wasn't done for Downs either.
No.
So, so what we sent her, what was sent to Downs is, give us an estimate on what it is, what it would cost to repair this building, and that's it. No, nothing more specific than that.
Just, just what's outlined on here, all all the trees, you know, everything itemized based on the square footage. And that's what you normally do when you begin a project and see what the, what the budget would cost, right? So that budget would go either up or down based on when you start designing, you bring your, uh, engineers in. It could be more work in certain areas, could be less, and what kind of product you're using for roofing, what kind of windows. You know, electrical, that that will all come out, um, as you have the designs, and then they can give you a hotter number as well. Right now, Downs was only submitting based on, um, the square footage of the building. Cause we we don't have documents to give them.
Okay, so their bid was a hundred million dollars, or now ninety eight million dollars, so there's a vast difference between eight thousand. I mean, it's, so this isn't, these bids aren't to do renovations to the building, these bids are for.
Are just to do a second. The the to do a second estimate, just to give you an estimate, they they haven't submitted their estimate, we we're deciding. Do we wanna spend this additional money to give, get us a second estimate?
Yeah, a second.
So this, these are the fees for them to give.
Correct. Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Or else the amount of difference between.
Yeah, because we we.
Ninety two million.
Yeah.
Eight thousand, yeah, no, no, that's, you know, you thought it was a good deal, that's.
So we.
You write the check right now.
We wrote something. You've heard from committee members and people in the public that they are on a second investment, right? So that's why we went down this road, because this is a, um, a big project. It's, it's part of the architectural economy of the city, and so that through day one, this city wall, so. We thought it would be prudent to get a second estimate based.
Sure, yeah, I just didn't know, I just didn't understand that this, these represented fees and not the actual estimate, it just wasn't clear. But now it's.
I apologize, you know, I mean, that's, uh.
Now, they did a full, full bar, then it would be much more pricey, you said that day, actually, you got submission of full ball months, but that's not what we're looking for.
Correct.
Right? I mean, we could share those, um, with the committee, um, but this is what we're looking for, what we're voting on tonight, is just basically to replicate. What Downs did and give us, you know, um, give us an estimate based on the square footage, just like Downs.
What, what happens? If whoever we pick comes back and says, yep, a hundred and eighty million.
Then we're gonna have.
Uh, we have to go out for another one? Because now I've got this end and this end, who do I believe?
Well, I guess we'll have to cross that.
I mean, the best case scenario is they come out and say a hundred and five, hundred and eight million, ninety five million.
Yeah, and I guess we could, we would have to adapt them, give the version of, you know.
So I got a question, maybe Chris can answer that, you know, some of these, uh, contractors, uh, well-known contractors. I went to somebody who owns an iron working company who does all the steel work, all schools, all the projects. All around New England, and I asked him about these three companies, he's never heard of any one of these three. So I'm just wondering, how well-known are these three companies that we're going to get the price on? Like Gilmain, all these other ones, he's heard of all of these people, you heard of R G B? He's heard of all these companies, they worked with all of these companies, they own a big steel company, they do all the erection. I asked him, hey? Have you heard of these three companies? These are out of my league on company, and he's never heard any one of these three companies.
What, Alana, um, uh, five A, and Collius?
Yeah.
Now, Collius has, they've been working with the school committee, the school department, for since I was on the school committee, um, they've overseen, um, two, or the high school, no. The projects that went out of winters, Baldwin, uh, they've been a project manager, working with the city, uh, with the school department directly for many, many years.
So they're the project manager of the high school now being built?
Yes.
Yes.
They're not the construction, they're the project managers, so as I guess what you were saying with R G B. Um, they turn around and they have their consultants or whatever they do for the cost estimate, so I think Colli is probably doing the same thing, right? They sent out to.
Absolutely.
A secondary best, you know, their project manager, and they have the network of these people to estimate, right? Am I correct?
Right, and 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 it should say, that's why we gave a a little, uh, we included their summary. Right, so, uh, Elena is, they do mostly all cost, um, uh, estimating, right, so. Yeah, I mean, there's, could be a hundred cost estimators in in Rhode Island, right? I I don't know how many there are, but, um, so. They they're not doing the construction, they're only doing the cost estimate, right? Five A design, I I believe it's a Philly newer business. Um.
Yes.
They they should say then, you know, in the.
And when they submitted, um, you know, they the whole more of a whole wrong thing, and they would show, um, you know, a little more of their history too.
Correct.
So we pass that out. Cause we're not voting on that, but I give them, um, the many, more understanding.
Yeah, and I believe Colli is. They were gonna work with, um. Shawnet, yes, thank you, yes. Yeah. God, oh, yeah, Shawnet, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, that's who, yeah, that's who you read there, um, summary, they were gonna, that's who that was gonna be there.
So a lot of these project managers terms that, you know, even at S M A, S M A, I worked with, with, uh, when we did the, um. The, uh, facilities master plan for the school department back in two thousand or better, so a lot of these, uh, the reason why you you focus on these six is they had. Done business with the city before, correct?
We 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 voted last time, uh, for those five vendors, we we reached out to, you know, I mean. Those, the, uh. I think it was, uh, six really, it was, cause we included Colli, right?
You're not saying six?
Six, yeah, we 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 picked six of them, um, and like, like I mentioned earlier, Elena was referred from O T B. And then five A is on the N P A, and they they reached out once and they must have heard it from someone. That they were doing work, uh, we were looking for an estimate, and they had, uh, history of working at City Wall. So they asked, um, uh, they could, um. Put a, hold them in too.
Do we remember or know where Downs were on this list of what they also charged, do we remember what their fee was? Like, look, where do they fall in this range?
Well, Downs is 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 the owner rep, they they're, they're representing the city, right, so they're basically. I think she's, what, what they charge.
Yeah, what they charge compared to these prices.
Yeah, I mean, he, if, uh, Dave Padge, remember, he had said it's gonna cost us probably about twelve to fourteen thousand, I think that we said that when he was here. I would have to go back.
No, just to get a sense of.
If we hadn't mentioned, I've, I don't know, I think he said, uh, it should be under fifteen to do the work, um.
Because of.
Yeah. What what he, what what their company charged for their, um, their costs, I would have to go back and look, cause. They were doing a lot of different things, um, cause they weren't just doing the cost estimate, they.
That's, they're sort of, kind of, you know, wow. Sort of in the middle, but that's because there's a big spread between eight and twenty seven thousand dollars, so it made me ask the question is. What is it that Colliers is gonna do that so much, that makes it so much more expensive than Alana, and is it, maybe that's, I mean.
Well, I was gonna ask Peter that question, like, is with your experience, why is it such a discrepancy? And I'm sure you see it all the time.
Uh, we were here at four o'clock opening bids, uh, for the John Street Playground. And, you know, the the bids may reach from a million six to over two million. Uh, so as, out of percentage basis, that's, that's, I would guess, the gap is what we're seeing here, um. But, you know, for instance, you know. I'm looking, I'm looking at the the later bid and the five A design studio, for instance. Um, I think what we're seeing, and also the later bit, and I could, which said, um. The Downs, as I believe you're right, listen, chart is around twelve thousand and change, maybe the original. It's again, it's it's the third party contract where they would have somebody else coming. Um, and do and do the work, and then they would receive an invoice from them, a company like one, yeah. Would give away to them, and then they would pass those to us, their costs, you know, they're 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 a for-profit business, so they're gonna mark up. If or to the city. Um, the reason, uh, the arena number is smaller is it's really just one, no, no building. It's so, it's the sort of price.
Cause otherwise, O T V would then charge you something because they're sent.
I'll just, that's interesting, um, that is, you know, uh, we don't really. You know, we just, we just receive the bids and we don't, you know, unless we're gonna negotiate with them, we don't call them back and say, you know. We missed something, you know, but if you, it can happen, they're they're by far the largest company, I would say, that, uh. That responded, you know, that could be the most company most open, I mean, I can say.
Well, I I, I've seen it with other companies, they'll come in with this real high bid, and that's their way of saying, we really don't want the job.
That was luck, you know, I'm gonna give you this point, we'll deal with it. Yeah, that that is, that's what I was saying, yeah, yeah.
We can see that.
Alana came in a little bit low because they're trying to get into the game with the business, a little more pressing.
So that's what I was, what I was wondering is, what would be the reason, I mean, are we getting one for twenty seven thousand dollars, or is it still? The same service by the extent that was what they can argue.
Because we're really, we're very, very specific on what we're at, so maybe I was hoping it was a whistle that.
I should, cause.
Actually, I've seen that.
The other few has anything pointed out that we're looking to, so, you know, I'm not sure why they decided, but.
I I I think, I think you've seen a good example, uh, Elena, their cost estimate, so. You know, they they took out, uh, R G B part, um, you know, if you loan to five A or Colli is. Now you have that second person that's with you, maybe in whatever services they're doing. You know, and and and, I mean, they're they're getting, you know, they're paid for that, right, so. It's, yeah, I mean, that's, us as a board has, uh, comedian, uh, sorry, has inside, is that extra money worth? Getting that.
Right.
You know, I mean, how much of, if we're paying eight thousand, or if we go to the the twelve and a half. Is it worth that additional money, having that additional person or digital staff there? They give us a different insight, I I still, I think it's pretty straightforward what we're asking them for. Um, you know, and and it's it's basically to see, are we still in the same range as the Downs core estimate? Um, you know, and we had said before, the longer we move this goal, uh, down the road, the prices go up. Also, right, so, and once we have construction documents, which cost, could cost a million dollars just for a design. Then we can get a real clue now, but I I think this committee wants to know. Do we, do we wanna invest close to this amount, and and that's what we, what we're looking for is. Is, you know, and what is that number right now that that we can?
Right.
We can kind of say. Is it, you know, I mean, can we go back to the council and say, we wanna recommend spending X amount of money, I think that's what we're. Trying to make a decision on.
And whatever we do spend, what do we, what exactly are we getting for that? You know, that eight thousand dollars is lower and. Theoretically, it's the same service, but you, as you say, you might have a smaller pool of people that are actually working on the project, where we spend more money. You know. The quality is not necessarily the the same across the board, so. It's some variables to.
Yeah, so, Chris, you said that, um, uh, they gave you estimates above the hour queue, right? That will, so it's not something we're gonna vote on, but do you have those packages so the committee can see that?
Yeah.
I mean, I would like to have those passed out, because it'll give you a little more of a sense where, like, if they did a, if you could explain, what did they, they went way above and beyond.
Yeah, what they also gave us is. If we were gonna decide to go forward with the project and, uh, produce, uh, design documents. And then once they have that, they would be able to now give you, you know, exact cost estimates. Um, so that they did give us a price on on that, that's not what we're asking, we don't, we don't even have a design.
No, we're not, we're not.
Right, well, so I don't know, we want to, I brought them, I I don't have a problem sharing them.
Yeah, I.
I don't, you know.
Just so that, you know, I think it's always good to, yeah, but I would just definitely share them, cause you're gonna see that. You know, I think you said Colliers was a lot more higher on that part than there, okay, so, um, but that's not, for some reason, they submitted that, and that's why, that wasn't the hour queue, like, so.
Right.
Um, but yes.
I just see that with Friday design, even though it's not Colliers, the project manager is from Colliers.
Hmm, I mean, I don't think so.
So one with Bentley Company.
And the five A.
Yeah. Show the Bentley Companies they collaborate with, right? Though the first one is Mr. Justin Bernard, junior freshman, you're from college.
Yeah, that's that's their reference, I believe, right?
So they've worked with.
So they've worked with.
So they've worked with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're specialized in historic tax credit projects, historic preservation, renovation, better. Do we have any projects that they've completed for these particular two different? Submissions, cause I'm familiar with Colliers, but not the other one. Cause I'm familiar with Colliers, but not the other one. I don't remember seeing them on that list, were they?
Uh um, the five A, they were, they were on the state N P A, but we didn't discuss the. Cause they were, they were a company and we just, yeah, I mean, we were just trying to pick the ones that um we had recently did business with.
Right, and it had kind of our expertise and historical buildings. Do we have any complete, like, projects that we can kind of?
The the owner, the owner of five A has done work, um previous work uh in um. For the city of Tachia under a different um instance. In doing the rehab right now, yeah, off on Cohen Street, thirteen units, uh I think it just broke ground like on Friday. Yeah, yeah. The roses, I think they brought him on to their.
Any other projects they were familiar with?
That was my first time working with him.
Yeah.
Um that's a lot I'm familiar with.
Yeah, they 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 have areas of expertise and other areas, so I'm just wondering what those completed products would be.
Yeah.
Have another reference, so I mean, we have this, but we don't have anything to kind of reference that, right?
Yeah, exactly, yeah. I I I I not to cut you off, I I probably, I, if if you wanna share the other proposals, then they do have.
They can take a quick look at it. You know, this is not, we're not voting on this, but this is for some reason they submitted these and this is not what we're, we're gonna do. Um this is not on the table, it's on the table, it's this, the eight, twelve and a half and um twenty seven. But there's more data in there. Yeah, so it was, oh really? So yeah, so you're gonna see that those are substantially higher, so I wanna make sure you guys seen that. That we, that's them. If you wanna take a couple of minutes, peruse them, receive what they've done, like Alana, I think. Second, third page showing some of the things we've done, okay?
I got a question, Mr. Chairman, I thought this committee isn't a hire company to do the job, we're only here to. To recommend either rehab it, downward, or move forward, wouldn't that be up to the council? At the time with that decision, what company they would pick out and use your experience?
This is just for the estimate, this is just, all we're doing.
So we're looking for another estimate and you're the one that's recommended by O G B at eight thousand dollars. They do just estimated, so it's not like I hire you to do my estimate, I mock it, I was like, yes, I have the experience. Why wouldn't he go with the eight thousand? We're just in here to get a number. It's not like we're going with these companies, we're not even sure if we're gonna. So why spend extra money if we're just getting another number? We know Downs is a well-known company. We're just trying to see are their numbers accurate and how much of an increase has it gone up since Downs? Done their report, who are we bought now in two thousand and twenty five?
So that's why it is.
And the directly, well, the list we provided is, if there is a difference, we can dig in and see where, you know, where it came, you know. Yeah, what part of the building is it that's that we do?
And so, yeah, the whole object is just to get that second estimate and to actually see if, you know, like you said, Downs is a reference. But this is a real important project and we just wanna get a second opinion, so you're right, the eight thousand dollars is the. Most uh cost effective uh plan, so we'll have to see what the committee says.
Yeah, and 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 that's why I I questioned, do we wanna share this proposal, cause that's not what we were asking. But I think um listening to the the committee that. They wanted to know some of the history of what projects they have and and, you know, I mean, it kind of outlined, you go through, I I know it's a lot to digest. But um, you know, I mean, you can see kind of their past projects that they they all worked on, and that was one of the questions that. You don't wanna do this previously?
Yeah, it seems like there's something here, there's something here that says, cost estimated to reconstruct restoration. So that thirty six thousand was to offer of something more than what we wanted to do, that was not part of the hour queue. That's why I see it gets confusing, right? So that's what I was like, okay, well, we're gonna.
I had to look at today to be.
Yeah, 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 so that's what's confusing because we, the hour queue was specifically for the ones that came back in eight, twelve and a half and twenty seven. And they need more.
More, more, they they need two two different.
But since there's a history, they wanna, something they wanna know the history, well, they have a little more.
Yeah.
Phones on this proposal, so you can see, so definitely the first two or three pages will give you references of what they've done.
Yeah.
All right, so instead of going through the, you know, the whole thing, it's the highlight that as you go through. The different ones, gonna see the thirty six thousand that they went up to, and then, you know, but they. You can see they've had some experience, so they probably had somebody on their team that worked on, I guess.
Elena did the um, yeah, but in this case, Elena did the cost estimate um for the group. At I remember when we did the police and the fire group, um and that that's what the stock after that was the.
The stock was, and they subbed it out to. I just noticed that.
Yeah, I mean, we did a police and fire, fire, and then we did the war uh around the.
And the towers, but it's just a few days myself, I'll counsel, you know, it's it's. Yeah, yeah, so, you know, I know there's some work that's probably votes.
Yeah, it's an old picture from from a.
I just thought this would give you a little bit of history too, if you wanna look quick at this, but um. It's not what we were getting for, uh it was, yeah, so, but I I think it was important to share, so you can see. So I think it was thirty six thousand, you know, you can see like, uh one was eight, they went thirty six on that proposal. One was twelve, they went up to like seventy seven, and then four more, and then one was twenty seven, twenty seven, and went up to two hundred and thirty two thousand. So, you know, it's it it just shows you that it was bigger, plus a week from then, it's something that we already did, we weren't looking for. And it was still a lot of.
And and you just add that, you know, I mean. Take take the 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 price, the second price out, you know, in the package, it does have, I I was very impressed with. You know, I mean, the details and and the presentation, um outlining the different projects, you know, you, as you can. You know, you're just looking through them, I know it's the first time you guys who you're going about, you already put a lot of effort in. And the present, you know, that they have their business, you know, so. There it is.
So that's what's in front of us, um and, you know, we can. If we choose one tonight, then Chris will have the right to go ahead and we'll have to work with them. And with that cost estimate going, um and then it could be presented, we'll do the last item on our agenda at the next meeting. We had one scheduled for the fourth of December, but because, you know, we had waited for more information and then with the. Following with the schedule last meeting, we're behind two weeks, so we're gonna have to push that out a couple of weeks, give them a lot of time, but we'll talk about that when it's started. On that agenda item, but and then hopefully they can present what's, you know, if we're satisfied with one of these companies and then go on.
I uh, if you don't mind, in my opinion, I would like to discuss item four before we vote on these. Cause uh I think it's relevant to what the Masonry Institute might recommend.
What you do is you table this, pick up the next one and then come back.
No, no, I mean, I don't mean another meeting, I mean later.
It's within this meeting.
Yes.
So if you wanna, if you wanna put something aside during this meeting, you table it, you take up the other thing, and then you'll come back and take this off the table and. That's the technical, rich.
We're gonna motion to the table, we got to give a second.
Make a motion to the table, our number three, and move on to number four.
Second.
Like the table then, Mr. Um, any eyes, second by Mr. Barry, um table is. Okay, item number four, absolutely.
An update on City Hall project assistance from Masonry Institute.
Real bad, and also real good, second by Mr. Manyari, the um take up item number four. Uh which is update on City Hall project assistance from Masonry Institute, as well as yours, sir.
Also, here's the thing, I gave them down cost estimate, they don't review those kinds of things, they will only step in once we. You know, we get another estimate, if we go further and let me see, so I spoke to Dave Patrick about this. He gave us really a thirty thousand foot view, I'd say, high level. Um if we chose to restore the building, for example, selected an architect, had them do schematic drawings, got pretty far into the process of. Junior, we had a building where they proposed to do, then the Masonry Institute stepped in and say, okay. We like what they're doing here, they can do this there instead, that kind of thing, so. We're still really fifty thousand feet here, who would pick another estimate, but we can't even get involved them until we're, I guess, to your point earlier. City Council might be the one deciding who we end up going with, so I think they're way, way down the line, we can't engage with them for now.
Um so the reason I think it's relevant because, so I had a conversation with with Casey, we stopped at the Masonry Institute and. Um she said the last conversation she had related to City Hall was about their offer to uh either. Make suggestions or um uh recommendations, or even just vetting any contractors that we might decide to work with. Um she said all they were waiting to see were construction documents and specs and was never. Those things were never submitted, um. She was a little uncertain as to why we we just never followed up.
Well, that's that's what I mean, she told me we need to have those things to proceed and like, that's, we have to engage with, with one of these um.
To have somebody to design the renovations, right? So while we do that and spend money. This committee is deciding what commercial we wanna go in, right? That that's from my understanding, that's what we're, we're trying to do, so. So in two weeks, and go through that process and hire someone, and that would go through the purchasing one and and. Follow the purchasing guidelines for that. As as far as the tower, we we did, do have a design, we have um that already went out the bid, that was already approved through. The historic and and what products we're using, so we already have a hot number, I did. I think it was, it's old, but, you know, I mean, the long week, but that was, I think, we had said. I don't wanna say the.
It's not, it was, we had two bids, one was a little over sixty million, the second was a little over seventy, yeah.
So you're saying the documents that they need don't exist yet, right? So, but it it seems, it seems like a. To my mind, a carpe for the horsing, so I think she said they would, like, if we set them a list of contractors, I think. They would be able to comment on um, you know, to their, to their knowledge, you know, to what degree these these. Contractors or firms have experience in certain kinds, in masonry construction. Um and that they would might recommend others that are, you know, more or less in the vicinity. Um anyway, I my thought is, I just, I don't know why we would, if they're just offering sort of um. Advice or direction or guidance, I don't know why we wouldn't take them up on that offer, you know, I understand, you don't have. When she said construction documents, I guess I assumed that like documents that exist for the building already. But we didn't have any, we, there's nothing, so what she's asking for doesn't exist.
We we have old, in fact, I think we shared it with uh in one of the first couple of meetings, that was in the package, uh I know um. We had showed, I had brought some uh plans and stuff, that we have some old, but the bottom line is, what masonry work are you doing? You won't know that until a designer comes in and engineer starts evaluating the building, what masonry work? Needs to be repaired, um is it more interior, exterior, you know, I mean, we don't know that until they, we bring somebody in.
My sense was much more, much more broader than that, the building is a a masonry constructed building, I think we're talking about obviously the exterior, right? And and I think the problem has been that the exterior, the masonry of the exterior has not been um, not been well ma- maintained. It is is needs someone who has experience and knowledge about that particular kind of masonry construction to to. Be able to, I think this is, my sense is this the problem that we're having, that, you know, repairs that have been done in the past haven't been done properly, and so. Sort of spending money on the problem that's not fixing the problem, and so, once and for all, if the problem is gonna be fixed. Should we not ask the Masonry Institute for advice on who might be qualified to do the fixing?
Yeah, that that would be, you know, I mean, that would be, like, like Jason said, once we hire someone to come in and start evaluating and designing. That's when we would bring somebody in like that, that we bring in and start, you know, the different, different trade that would give us a a vice. Uh we had talked about possibly bringing somebody in to chase grants and stuff, um but that's the next step. We have to decide what we wanna do with the the building, right? So.
Right.
From my understanding, we're here to decide, we wanna know the uh second cost estimate. It it's a cost estimate, uh are we, uh is that, I'm I'm going back to a hundred million, but I know it's a little less. Is that, are we still in that ballpark? Is that something we wanna bring back to the council and say? We we as the committee wants to uh go forward with it, and then if we if we're gonna go forward. Those are all the things that are very important that, and you mentioned that, they could be involved to saying, okay, can we go? With a different type of ma- uh mason, is it different kind of brick, can you use different things, as you mentioned. Still had it to start building, can it be, would it, would they would approve that?
So consultation with the I M A is, with the I M I is not, not a done, it's not off the table, it's just that I, you know, in the. Minutes, there was an addendum that, oh, because they don't do cost estimates, we were not gonna consult them anymore, we didn't. There was never a conversation about them doing a cost estimate.
We didn't forward, it would be prudent of us to see if we can get them, if we were going, right? Because this is what they would.
And I think they said they they will. Yeah, I mean, but they, we're not at that step. And the guy from Downs that was here at the same time, they actually worked together on a project, and he said, if we get to that point, they come in. So I think they work with companies, once they get to that point where, like, Mr. Crowley said, rebuild then. Alright, this is the plan, we wanna bring it to the state a lot, we plan on doing this, and they'll come in and say. You can't use this because that's line, this was mortar, like they were saying about the difference, pictures of, you can't just go in and rehab it with. Mortar if it's all line, and all of that, where they'll come in later and work with these big companies.
And that's the first I heard of that before, you know, like, if it's mortar line, it. I would know, you know, I would just go, they wanna make it.
And it's not, yeah, it's not just that, it's it's, you know, I mean, the window, the.
I'm pretty sure I'm closing the door on uh the opportunity to consult with the Masonry Institute, since they made the offer, it costs us nothing. Um and it's a valuable resource, so I would just.
Yeah, please reveal me, you were supposed to do that if we move forward, so. All right, so we have all the bits in front of us, we've had a good dialogue about this. Oh yeah, that's right, yes, so now what do we do now?
Make a motion to close out number four and move back to number three, second one.
Alright, so we can't, oh, we don't have to reopen it, this this table?
I would, yeah.
Alright, so it's gonna move by council, we'll be affected by council, Moran, that we reopen, item number three. And which is interview and consideration of bids and projects, point six C C. And which is in view of consideration of bids and projects, twenty six C C with the number one. Pretty construction services, conceptual estimates and study, revitalization of city hall three bids. Okay, so we had, um, good dialogue.
Yeah, um, I did one of the, and that, um, we did reach out to the three, um, firm, and they, they all said. Uh, once approved with the contract, it would be four to six weeks, uh, for the work. They, cause it's kind of, uh, you know, you go, the whole already is coming in, so. Um, right, yeah. So I just, why I just wanted that, cause I I know that was one of the, you know, I mean. Yeah, I know, we wanted, I got the second course, that's maybe soon.
Just four or six weeks.
Yeah.
Well, there's, yeah.
Once, once we sign the, you know, I mean, which should be a simple. I I see some, not simple, but.
Yeah.
It's it's, you know, I mean. Well, I'm saying for a contract life, get the correct quarter, you know, and I could take, uh, you know, the six one, yeah.
And you know, and we wanna done right, so, I mean, because, again. We were, we're here, we're spending money, we're gonna make sure it's spent wisely, we're gonna make sure we're very good. Second estimate, and we can do compare and see what happens, you know, uh, with those comparisons.
So I, I, my feeling is, for three different reasons, I lean towards Elon. Number one, recommended by R G B, uh, number two, they did a lot of this work a few years ago. So they've got a lot of records, I'm sure they still have all their files, and number three, ten thousand dollars, I just don't wanna throw. A lot of money at this, that I don't think is. I I don't think we'll get fifty percent more information on, if I say, design.
So is that, yeah, you're making a motion directly?
Um, yeah, I'll make a motion for Elon and Construction.
Do I have it, all right, so I have a motion by Mister Barry, second, uh, also will be that. Um, we award, uh, the bid to Elon and Construction Consultants, partnering, recommended from our, be for eight thousand dollars. That motion's on the floor, we have discussion.
I'd like to just say one thing, like, uh, Kevin said, they already worked on it, so maybe that's why they are less money. They they don't need to keep sending people out there to look, so now they can come in, they already charged once, now they can come in. So maybe that is the reason why there's so much fallout.
Also seems like they've done other city hall renovations, other places too, so.
And they were recommended.
They're recommended.
I like R G B's resume, so. They're recommending for R G B.
Can you expand on that, please, close this up?
I was reading through, uh, last month when, or, or the last meeting was not last month, like, um, last meeting.
Yeah.
I like R G B's resume, they worked on, I think it was, obviously, City Hall, and I just felt that. That qualified them a little bit more, in my opinion, this kind of works, so if I wanted to be recommended by them, I would. I would agree with that, um. You know, yeah.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, there's a motion on, why, yeah, discussion. Nothing, please take a walk, uh, this will be to approve a lot of construction in a, uh, in a lot of eight thousand dollars.
Senator Rubio.
Yes. Who approved a lot of construction consultants, it's the one that did.
Alana, instruction.
Tom Rubio.
Yeah.
Elizabeth Marrera.
Yeah.
Jason Petnato.
Yes.
Mr. Crowley.
Yes.
Barbara Druvesky.
Yes.
Kevin Mendiati.
Yes.
Kevin Barrett.
Yes.
Ninety zero.
Also, um, Rand, could you take, uh, item number five?
Item five is to discuss, I guess, our next meeting.
We have a council, Moran, second by Council, we'll discuss the next meeting, so, um, you said four to six weeks, correct, so today we're at the twenty. So we got the third.
Yeah, you're gonna shoot, but, okay, I thought the next meeting was to review the contract, no?
No, well, do we? If we get the, you know, we got the, yeah, we gotta, the next meeting will be to review their bid, when we already, we already got the. Where one and the contract, so now the next one is, we're gonna come back and review what is the, the restaurant. Right, I mean, because we already know, we, this right here explains what they're gonna be doing, right? So.
Right.
So we're, we're pretty good with that, right? And you, we have the wherewithal to make sure that, you know, out of the, uh, building bond, that Chris can. Uh, expend this, um, money to the, um, to do. Um, to go with this consultant, and for the estimate, the estimation, so, um. Yeah, the next meeting is going to be to go over, out of that meeting, we'll be to go over the, their restaurant.
But they're, they're definitely in force, it's true.
No, no, not, well, for this, no, I did check. Back for this, because we're going to, abiding. Yeah, and I thought, yes, and thank you for bringing that up, and that was a thought on my mind, so I I reached out, uh, to. Make sure we can do it this one. I find out a little place that, where it could change, but my understanding, and I did double check on this, um, once we approve it, yeah. If not, we would have approved it, a recommendation to whoever had, whatever makes, so, I, I know with, um, the M P A and the small amounts and what have you.
Right, and and I didn't wanna speak for, for fear, but, yeah, I mean, it it doesn't, because of the amount, it doesn't have to work.
If this is a string of project where we may even just.
And that's why I was saying, uh, simple, you know, I mean, nothing's simple, but.
So we don't have to, yeah, so basically, we got what we got, we're gonna go with this contracted, uh, a lot of. And then the next meeting, what we'll do is we'll go over that, yes, and, uh, their cost estimate. And we can compare it without, maybe we'll bring the balance back to, you know, so we have it.
Yeah.
So we can have, this way we can have a thousand, so we got, and then, uh.
Yeah, we 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 can submit, um. Resubmit the one balance has, or if you wanna have the Patrick back.
I'll make that decision as we move forward, so.
Mister Chairman, I got a question, when they come in with the bid, they're gonna have it. Would they have somebody here from that company?
We can request them.
So just go over, so if we have questions, if they're at a hundred and fifty million, like, we had one. Why, so they could answer some of our questions, maybe, so if they have it, they're saying four to six weeks. Maybe when Chris reaches out. He can ask if somebody from that company could come and speak, answer any questions from this board, that they have here. Like down, then send somebody and went over the different thing.
So I think, yeah, let's ask them.
It it might be a fee, we include that in the, um. Yeah, no, I'm I'm just being, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean.
All right, um, all right, thank you. So, right now, we originally scheduled the fourth of December, which would bring us to six weeks, okay? We may wanna go a week out, maybe to the eleventh, but and then after that, we get rid, we'll start holidays, right? So how does everybody feel with the eleventh, do you think we can get that back in time, is everybody comfortable on this? Committee to do the eleventh of December for the next meeting?
I know, I can make it the eleventh, after that, the eighteenth. There's too, too close, it wouldn't be. I wouldn't be able to make any of the meetings, that's all I'm saying, so like you said, I think the eleventh, the chairman's giving them enough time to reach out. The secret Santa.
I, is everybody on this committee okay with the eleven?
The eleven, I think you're gonna be prepared, they said four to six weeks, by the time the PGO gets out there, that's pumping it a little bit more. I I think you're almost, I hate kicking down the, the can down the road anymore. I think January eighth was probably a lot more, uh, realistic, realistic.
Do you think so?
I mean, if they come out six weeks. You gotta get the paperwork turned around quick enough.
I mean, you know.
You could tentatively schedule the eleven and then see if.
All right, why don't we do that, why don't we tentatively schedule the eleven? Knowing that it's a placeholder, if not, the second option will be January eighth.
Nobody does anything.
But I think, you know, if they, hopefully they have it done, and if it's done by, by January, uh, December a lot of. But if not, cause in the effort to make it show and keep moving forward, I'd like to do it for the December, but if they're not ready. Don't worry about shit, then we can move on, okay, that's all good. So we'll know within a few weeks of.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I I I can follow up with them. A couple of weeks in, and, yeah, so it's not like last minute, like.
Okay, we don't need to go down there, that's something that we're discussing, okay?
And this would be to review what our estimate.
Review the estimate. Yes, that's all we're doing. I appreciate your time, uh, thank you, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to return, so I can second.